At this point, I want to get started. Perfect. All right. So, good morning, everybody, and welcome. Let me start off by just saying what we said before that we miss you. And part of what makes our school the special place that it is are the relationships that we build, the experiences that we offer, and the traditions that we've developed along with the memories that we all make together. And all of those things kind of coupled with the high expectations around rigorous instruction that we have here helped set IS-34 apart and helped to make it what I believe to be the best middle school in all of New York City. In mid-March, all that started to change. The pandemic and the subsequent lockdown robbed us of a lot of time together. But we remain committed to staying together virtually. And we tried our best to continue to keep our relationships, our traditions, our experiences all intact throughout the past school year. Our teachers and our parents quickly adjusted to the remote setting. And while it's clear that no online experience can replace the value of that teacher-student relationship inside the classroom, we can honestly say that for the vast majority of our students and our staff, that we really didn't miss a beat. As an administration, we remain committed to ensuring that our Ares and our Eagles Society members received the recognition that they deserve. We made sure to recognize and celebrate each member of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as different accomplishments came up. And we were totally committed to that eighth-grade class, the class of 2020, and making sure that we celebrated them in a special way. And we figured out how to do that both in-person and virtually. Today, we begin to look forward. This morning, our goal is to outline IS-34's reopening plan. To be fully transparent, we're a little over three weeks away from opening day, and there are still many, many unresolved issues at the central level. There's still a lot of policy that still needs to be created and implemented, but all that is out of our hands. What we can do is start to plan for our school and what we think will be the procedures that are in place for September. Since May, my team and I have been working nonstop to create an opening day plan that we believe is both safe and instructionally sound. The safety of our students and of our staff is our number-one priority, and we're confident that our plan will work. Before we jump into the plan, I think it's important that I give you a little bit of background information. This information helps to inform our decisions. Before considering a plan, schools in general across the city had to study their physical layout, the layout of their school buildings, and they had to take into account the square footage of each individual classroom, and also the larger spaces like our gymnasiums, our auditorium, our library, and our cafeteria. Based on the square footage, we were required to set capacity thresholds for each space, ensuring that about 65 square feet per person was accommodated for the social distance requirements. This formula quickly told us that we could accommodate about one-third of our total student population at any one time. Each classroom, depending on size, can hold between 10 and 15 people. That includes the staff members that are inside the room. After mastering our space allocations, we were presented with several reopening options from the chancellor, each with its own pros and cons. The chancellor's models provided for students to either remain fully remote or to return to school in a blended learning model that incorporates both remote and in-person instruction. Please note, because I'm asked this about three or four times a day, please note that five days a week of in-school instruction was not an option. It's not something that we chose. That was not an option that we were allowed to consider. According to the information provided by the Department of Education via parent survey, about 90% of our parents chose the in-person blended model for their families. About 10% chose to stay fully remote. It's important to note that families can opt to be fully remote at any time, but they can only switch to the blended model at specific predetermined dates. Now, as policy has it, we have not been provided with those dates just yet. We expect to receive them soon, but all indications kind of trend towards those opt-in dates to blended being quarterly. After careful consideration of all the options that were outlined by the Department of Education and by the chancellor, we chose option two, which was the three-cohort model. Again, the three-cohort model. We believe that this model is the best fit for our school, and it also seems to be the dominant model for almost every middle school across Staten Island. This model essentially allows our students to follow their regular school program while in school in the blended learning time. And if we ever do eventually return to school, we can transition from this three-cohort model to a full day without reprogramming the building and reprogramming the students. So, we thought that that was the most instructionally sound and the safest play for our kids and for our staff. Now, I'm going to try to take a chance and try to lay out this model for you. So, each student that chose to return to school in the blended format will be divided into one of three cohorts. These three cohorts, for the most part, are separated alphabetically. However, we have made some accommodations for families based on siblings in other schools, and in some cases, siblings in our own school. Three cohorts: Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C. Let me walk you through them a little bit. Cohort A will service students with the last names beginning with the letters A through E. Again, Cohort A will service students beginning with the last names of letters A through E, and will meet in-person guaranteed every Wednesday. Cohort B will service students with the last names beginning F through M. Again, Cohort B, last names F through M, and will meet in-person every Thursday. Cohort C will service students with the last names N through Z. Again, Cohort C, letters N, N through Z, and will meet in-person every Friday. Mondays and Tuesdays will be rotating days for each cohort. Each cohort will be in school approximately five days for every three weeks. We will be posting a schedule for the week and for the month on our website so that parents can plan ahead. We understand that this is a heavy lift on your part, and it's going to be hard for you to manage childcare, transportation, getting to school, plus your own work and everything else that is being thrown at you. But this is the model, so please start to plan for it. On days when your cohort is not in school, the at-home cohorts will be participating in remote learning using Google Classroom. So, just because you're Cohort C, and it's a Wednesday, and you're not in school because Cohort A is, you are still logging into your Google Classroom, and you're keeping up with the work every single day. Fully transparent again here, there are still a lot of questions around students that chose the fully remote model. These questions are citywide and are not just specific to our school. But I believe that we have the capacity, and I know that we have the willingness to service our own fully remote students. So, I'm more than hopeful that IS-34's fully remote students will be taught by our teachers using Google Classroom. I know that that's been a question, and I know it still remains a question, but I'm confident in our ability, especially with the small number of fully remote students that we have, that we should be able to service our own students. After speaking with our teachers, it is really abundantly clear that our teachers want to teach our kids. So, that helps, again, those students that are fully remote. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue to use Google Classroom as our primary online platform. We are encouraging everyone to please join our Everything Eagles Google Classroom page. Currently, it has about 820 members, which means you have been logging on and you have been joining. So, that's important, and I thank you for that. In order to do that, in order to join our Google Classroom Everything Eagles page and to join our Google Classroom class-specific pages, you must have an IS-34 Gmail account. Information on how to set up an IS-34 Gmail account was sent home to all sixth graders, sixth-grade parents, and all new IS-34 students last week. If you are an existing seventh grader or a future seventh grader or a future eighth grader, and you were here with us last year, you do not need to recreate a Google Classroom account. You already grandfathered in, you already have an existing account. So, it's important, only new members, only new sixth graders or new seventh or eighth graders need to create a Google Classroom page. Again, make sure you're joining that Everything Eagles piece once you get involved. We will continue to use Pupil Path as our online gradebook and our primary means of communication between home and school. Again, our existing students, our current seventh graders, our current eighth graders already have existing Pupil Path accounts, and you do not need to do anything. Those are already existing. Information on how our incoming sixth graders can get up and running on Pupil Path will be sent home shortly. It's an individual invitation code, so it's going to require 400 separate emails on our part. So, it's something that we're working towards, but it's going to take us a little bit of time to get that information to you. Ideally, we want to send that to your Google Classroom, to your IS-34 Google account. So, please make sure you're up and running on that so that we can get you up and running on Pupil Path. Additionally, our website, is34.org, is an amazing resource. Please check it often. We try to keep the most up-to-date information there, and it's great to keep your calendar. The calendar for the different cohorts will also be posted on our IS-34 website, so please make sure you are checking that and getting up to date with the most information from there. Also, our social media pages, our Facebook page, Instagram page are wonderful tools, and we encourage everyone to follow us on those formats. I try, every chance I get, to post Everything Eagles, to send it home through Pupil Path, and to post it onto the website, Facebook, and Instagram. So, we try to reach you any way we can, but please make sure you're looking at us on all those different platforms. Now that I told you a little bit about our cohort structure, I think it's important that we start to outline the day-to-day operational plan. Again, it's important to note that safety is our primary concern. Everything else is always going to be secondary to safety. PPA is the first thing we want to talk about. So, PPA, first thing I think about is masks. Masks will be worn in school all day by everyone at all times, all staff, all students. Students and staff can wear any mask that they choose. We are not mandating a specific type. Masks will be provided in school for any student or staff member that forgets it, that leaves it at home, that drops it on the way in. You know, we deal with 1,100 kids and 200 staff members, so at any one time, somebody can obviously forget a mask. Masks are being provided by the Department of Education, and deliveries are constantly rolling in for us, so we should be able to provide anyone who needs one with a mask. It's a long day. It's going to take time for both staff and students to get used to wearing a mask for 5 hours and 30 minutes a day. But just like everything else, you'll eventually start to get used to it. It will be uncomfortable, especially in the beginning, especially during the warmer months of the early part of the school year, but we will get used to it, and we will start to adjust. But they do have to be worn. It is a mandate. Cleaning and disinfecting. All cleaning and disinfecting protocols are done by our custodial staff. Cleaning and disinfecting is done daily. Most of you know our custodial team, and you know the pride they have in the cleanliness of this building. If you walk around here, our walls are shiny, our floors are shiny, our staircases are clean, our classrooms are kept up with. They will continue to do that great job of cleaning the classrooms every day, and we're supremely confident in their ability to meet all DOE and CDC guidelines. We received some misters that spray disinfectant spray throughout the classrooms that will also help once the general cleaning is done inside the room. This misting spray is supposed to be something that also further takes another step towards disinfection. The school day. Our times have changed a little bit because of COVID. Normally, our school day was 8:00 to 2:20 every day. Now, with these new procedures in place, there have been some changes to teacher schedules. As a result of those changes to teacher schedules from Central, our new start of the school day is now 8:30. All right? The school day will start at 8:30 and will end at 2:00 PM every day that school is in session for your cohort. At the moment, we're trying to figure out, because I don't have guidance on this yet, when I can open the doors for early arrivals. We're trying to get some procedures in place. Once I have a little bit more guidance from Central on that, I can communicate to you when we can start to allow students inside the building. Bussing, and I think a lot of the arrival procedures will probably stem from bussing and from drop-off. So, let me tell you what I know about bussing. It's not much. All right? At the moment, we haven't received any information from Central regarding bussing. There are a lot of rumors floating around. I read a lot of newspaper articles about it, but in reality, there has been no firm guidance regarding bussing. Hopefully, the DOE will release some bussing guidance soon, but until then, I do not want to fuel rumors about bussing. I'm pretty confident that IEP-mandated bussing will still be in place. I am less confident about general education bussing, but, you know, again, I don't want to play into rumors on that. Arrival procedures. Like I said, at the moment, we don't know what time we can officially open our doors to let students in. It'll probably be about 20 minutes, if I'm guessing, before the school day starts, so somewhere around 8:10, we will begin our safety and wellness checks. Each day, and this is as policy is written now, schools are to perform wellness checks on students upon entering the building. Temperature checks will be done. Staff members will also have to self-certify a wellness check each morning upon entering. If anyone has a fever, they will be pulled to the side, and we will take some steps to make sure that that child is picked up and sent home for the day while we monitor it. We also plan on using three separate entrances to expedite the arrival procedures and to make sure distancing and safety spacing are in place. Probably, we will use the entrance on Yipman Avenue. We will probably use then two schoolyard entrances as well. If you've seen the schoolyard recently, it's under some heavy construction, so a lot of those procedures will be contingent upon what parts of the schoolyard are available to me to use. Breakfast. Traditionally, we serve breakfast to about 200 kids every day. This will continue. A grab-and-go breakfast will be available for every student that wants one upon walking into school, and breakfast will be eaten inside the classroom upon arrival. Lunch, again, at the moment, lunch will be eaten inside the classroom, and grab-and-go lunches will be provided for each student. Students will have a working lunch inside the classroom, and students can eat the school lunch that's provided, or they can bring a lunch from home. That's important. If you do not want to eat school lunch, you can bring one on your own. Currently, as policy is written, we are not permitted to eat lunch in the cafeteria. All right? Lunch at this point has to be done inside the classroom. This may change. Restrictions may lessen at some point, but for right now, lunch will be eaten inside the classroom. We are exploring the idea of eating outside whenever weather permits. So, really, any given day, we'll have about 350 students in the building. That number divided by three from each grade, it's a pretty manageable number to put about 125 kids out on the field at any one time. That field, you wouldn't even feel 125 kids out there. We can space out with an expectation of safety and spacing. So, that's one of the options we are considering. Hopefully, again, more information on that is forthcoming. Please note, because this happens all the time, if your child forgets their lunch at home, if they didn't take it out of the fridge in the morning, they left it on the counter, whatever it may be, you can't bring one up. We're not going to take it. So, if your child forgets their lunch, they're going to eat school lunch that day. Again, if your child forgets their lunch, they will eat school lunch that day. We are going to limit the amount of touching that's involved and the amount of deliveries, the amount of visitors to the building. So, if you forget lunch, it's school lunch for your child that day. Bathroom procedures. Traditionally, we only open the bathrooms on the first floor at IS-34. No matter where you are in the building, you come down to the first floor to go to the bathroom. Under these circumstances, we will now be opening bathrooms on every floor, and we'll be staffing bathrooms on every floor in an effort to speed up the bathroom process. We have some social distancing and capacity rules in place that will be enforced, and our custodians will regularly clean those bathrooms based on the DOE guidelines. But we think by opening bathrooms on every floor, it will limit the amount of students into one of our bathrooms at any one time. Hallway passing will be very limited this year. Groups of students will be escorted by their teacher from class to class. Just speaking about changing classes, for the most part, kids are going to remain in their classroom. The chancellor talks about them as pods. For the most part, kids will remain inside those pods for most of the day. When it comes to middle school, it's a little bit different than elementary school, and kids can't always stay inside those little pockets all day long. Also, it's good for them to move every once in a while from spot to spot just to change their mindset and change their direction. So, we will try to pass, and we will try to change classes probably once a day into a setting that is safe, secure, and clean. We're also looking at outside space again here whenever possible. I am really thinking about the idea of putting some tents on the property that allow me to utilize some outdoor space in all different types of weather conditions, but we're not there yet. We still have to get some permission on those ideas from Central staff. Traffic patterns. We've established one-way hallways, and we've established one-way staircases to eliminate children passing each other inside the hallways. We have the space to do that, especially with the limited number of kids in at any one time, so we're confident that traffic patterns can be safe and secure. And we are dedicating floors. We anticipate the sixth grade will be on the third floor, the eighth grade on the second floor, and the seventh grade on the first floor, based on the number of students within a grade and the number of classrooms that are available to us. Like we said earlier, there may be some mingling of those floors when it comes time to changing classes, but for the most part, that will be very limited. Dismissal procedures. Dismissal will be staggered by grade and by floor to allow for the safe and orderly passing of students out of the building. Back to bussing for a second, there is no guarantee that there will be general ed bussing at dismissal. So, just please be aware of that. And again, I will keep you informed of any bussing changes as they come about. IEP mandates. So, about 33% to 35% of our students in the building have an IEP. So, this is a big piece. All IEP mandates will be implemented and adhered to. There will be no changes to IEP status based on these COVID protocols. So, be confident that if your child has an IEP, the mandates, the goals, everything written inside that IEP will be adhered to and implemented while in school and, again, during the remote sessions. Paraprofessionals. All IEP mandates regarding paras will be met. There is still some pending guidance from Central regarding paraprofessionals' duties and responsibilities, but what I'll say is what our paras always do. Our paras go above and beyond to meet the needs of their students, and they will continue to do that. We had paraprofessionals that were going to students' houses and sitting outside the window all through this time, so we're confident that our paras will continue to rise to the occasion and will do an amazing job. Related services. This is your occupational therapy, your physical therapy, your speech, your guidance, your adapted phys ed, any other issues like that. All those requirements will be met and will be implemented. Some of these services will take place in person. Some of these services will take place through teletherapy. A lot of that will depend upon the amount of time children are in school and what type of in-person services can take place regarding IEP mandates while they are in school. And we are really working hard to find every inch of available space inside of our building to accommodate all of those OTPT speech-guidened sessions that need to take place. Like we said, about 35% of our student body has one or more types of accommodations, so we are making sure that we can meet all those mandates. Art and technology. So, this is your STEM class, your band class, your chorus, your art, your dance, your drama. We remain committed to keeping those classes in place. Now, again, full transparency, the Department of Education has put some strict measures in place regarding social distancing in those classes. So, where in a usual classroom, six feet of space is required. In some of these classes, in band and physical education, these type of rooms, we need to provide 12 feet of space. So, we are looking at our larger spaces inside the building, our gymnasiums, our auditoriums, our cafeterias, potentially the use of tents outside to try to accommodate these type of classes. We know that our kids love these classes. We know that the value of these classes is high, and we are doing everything in our power to make sure that we are able to provide for them. Some of it may take place in person, some of it may take place remote. We will have to juggle, we will have to be creative, but we are committed to making sure that these classes remain in place and that our kids have that outlet that they need through the course of the day for band, for chorus, for dance, et cetera. We've received a lot of questions about the extended day. Will aftercare be available? And we were just told late last week by our partnership with UAU that they will have an extended-day UAU program. That program will be available, we think, from 2:00 till maybe 6:00 PM every day, but it will only be available to students that are inside that cohort on their specific day in school. So, that will be, students that are in school will have the ability for aftercare. If you are home on a remote day or you are home fully remote, you will not have access to the extended day on those days. We've received a lot of questions about student schedules and homeroom designations. What exponent is my child in? That is all being finalized as we speak. We will get that information out to you electronically shortly. We anticipate being fully programmed near the end of August. Now, that seems like very close to the end of the year, and it really is, but I want to just be honest with you. At this point, I am not sure how many of my teachers, how many of my staff members are going to receive a medical accommodation to work from home. So, it's almost impossible at this point for me to program the building to have a teacher or two teachers in front of every room without knowing how many of my staff members may be home for medical accommodation. On top of that, I've yet to receive my budget for the 2021 school year. We anticipate and we hope, fingers crossed, that our budget will be released in the next 48 hours, but at the moment, again, without knowing how many teachers are on a medical accommodation and how many teachers I can afford to have inside the building. and how many teachers I can afford to have inside the building, it's very tricky for me to give you an accurate program. And I hate to give you a temporary class and then change it two or three times before the start of the school year. So I'm going to wait as long as I can to get you the most up-to-date information. Begin to plan for your cohort based on your alphabet or based on the alphabetical letter of your last name, but know that your actual class designation may not be released until closer to the start of the school year. Honors classes and Regents classes will still be programmed. Students that apply for and earn these seats in these coveted classes will receive their programs along with everyone else in the very near future. If your child is an ICT student, he or she is in an ICT class, that class will continue to be taught by two teachers. That's important to know. If you're in ICT, you will still have those two teachers in the room. If your child is a self-contained student, so in my 12-to-1 classes, in my 12-to-one-to-one classes, in my ACEs program, or in our hard-of-hearing deaf classes, all right, those classes will remain intact, fully intact in a 12-to-one or 12-to-one-to-one setting. What I've done is designate my largest classrooms for those students so that they can remain together on their specific days in school, and I can accommodate the number of parent professionals and related services that need to push into those classrooms. So we are working hard to make sure we have the available space for those kids in those classes and that all accommodations and IEP mandates are being met. Those classes, those 12-to-1 classes will not fall under the alphabetical cohort. Those 12-to-1 and 12-to-1 ACEs and hearing classes will be their own individual cohorts on specific days. So we're making that accommodation for those students on specific days so that we can keep them together in the space that's needed in order to service all the needs that are involved there. Summer assignments are still due the first week of school. Summer assignments are posted on our website. By now, you should be at least involved in your summer assignment. All right, I see people smiling because it means you haven't touched your summer assignment yet. But if you haven't done so, please get involved in those summer assignments and be ready to submit the work on the dates that are required. Sign-out procedures. Inevitably, students will need to leave early some point during the school day, at some point during the school year for a variety of different reasons. We will have to have some strict protocols in place there. Please, 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 make your appointments beyond the school day. All right, it's hard if your child's only in school five days a week, five days every three weeks, and you're making a dentist appointment on one of those days, you're missing one of those critical in-person days, and those in-person days are going to be so valuable and so limited. So please, 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 try your best to make all of those appointments outside the bounds of the school day or while you are in the remote setting or in the blended setting. Parents that are picking up their kids early from school will have to contact the school and let us know that you're here, and then you'll wait outside. We will find your child, bring them down to you, and you will sign them out from outside the room, but your access to the building will be very limited. Visitors in general will have extremely limited access to the building. The days of coming up to see me on a walk-in or coming up to see one of our assistant principals or a teacher in person are really kind of over for now. Almost all parent conferences and parent meetings are going to take place electronically via Zoom. If you don't have an appointment, your access to the building is going to be strictly limited and strictly enforced. Medical procedures and medical room. In a world where a lot of schools in New York City are currently without a nurse, we are blessed to have two nurses on staff. We have a Department of Health nurse, and we have a Department of Education nurse on staff. They both do a wonderful job tending to the needs of our kids. I can't say enough good things about them. We have a brand-new medical room that was just built a couple of years ago, and we are going to look to expand that space to try to accommodate any issues that may arise because of spacing and distancing issues. Technology in school. School-provided devices will be inside of classrooms. They will be cohort-specific, and they will be cleaned daily. However, if you have a personal device, we encourage you to bring it to school and use it. That way, it's your own personal device. You use it, you clean it, you touch it, nobody else does, and there's no issues with cross-contamination. We're confident in our ability to clean our iPads and clean our Chromebooks every day. But again, if you have a personal device, use it and bring it to school. Classroom ventilation. Our school has been checked, it was actually just checked on Friday, by the Department of School Facilities, and we have been cleared to open all classrooms inside the building. All classrooms are operational on every floor, and they are available to us. We have air conditioning in every single classroom. That is a luxury that many places do not have. Our air conditioners have all had their filters changed. They are clean, they'll be checked regularly, and they will continue to be clean. They are window units. The window units will be on inside the room almost on a daily basis, depending on the weather outside. But we will also have to keep a classroom window open. All right, air conditioners condition the air, they do not filter the air. We want to make sure we have some cross-ventilation through a window inside the classroom as well to keep the air flowing and clean at all times. Safety drills. We are still going to be mandated to do our fire drills, our lockdown drills, all of our procedures. They will still be in place. Distancing guidelines will be in play. Six students. Now, over the last couple of years, we've made a big push to try to get kids to come to school. If you looked at our attendance, our attendance was atrocious in comparison to other middle schools for whatever reason. You know, I can never speak to why our attendance was so low, partially because some of our families are going on vacation during the school year. Sometimes, kid attendance on rainy days trended down. Snow and other issues like that always got in the way. We've always done different things to incentivize kids to come to school. We still want kids to come to school, but we want you to stay home if you don't feel good, and we want you to stay home if you're sick. All right, again, we incentivize school. We want kids to be in school, but we want healthy kids to be in school. That's never been more true than it is right now. So please make sure you are taking a look at your kid in the morning, feel their head for a temperature. My mother used to give me the old fever hand test to see where we are. Now, we're asking you to be a little bit more specific. Scan their head, get a temperature check in the morning before you send them to school because if they do have a temperature upon arrival, they're not going to be allowed access into the building. So those temperature checks will be important. If you have to miss school because you don't feel good, everything is still available in Google Classroom. So if you're not in school, you can still keep up with what's happening because the work for the day, the flow for the day will be posted in Google Classroom, and you won't miss anything. It will just be like one of your blended days, one of your remote days. All attendance incentives that we've had in place for years have been put on pause, and attendance is no longer a requirement for membership in ARISTOR or Eagle Society, placement into an honors or a Regents class. So that's important for you to know. All right, I don't want you to say, "I sent my kid to school today because he didn't feel good because I wanted to make sure he made ARISTOR." That's no longer a requirement, and it's something that we have to be cognizant of and aware of. We want to make sure if you're not feeling well, that you stay home. This September, we will be transitioning almost 400 new students into our school. That encompasses the entire sixth grade as well as dozens of new seventh and eighth graders that are coming into our building. Our parent coordinator, our assistant principals, our deans, and our guidance counselors have all done a great job in assisting with that transition. We want to make it as smooth as possible, but whenever you're about to turn over over a third of your building, there will be hiccups along the way. So if you run into a hiccup, you run into an issue, let us know about it. All right, reach out to us through email. We're available through email, we're available through instant messaging on Facebook sometimes. Parents always find a way to get in touch with me. All right, and we always do our best to answer as soon as we get those questions. So please let us know about it. Formally, if you want to go through the formal process, email our parent coordinator, Diane Consolo, or our grade-specific assistant principals, Mr. Teames in the sixth grade, again, Mr. Teames in the sixth grade, Ms. Dan Kavitch in the seventh grade, and Mrs. Janiky in the eighth grade, or our parent coordinator, Diane Consolo. All of their emails are available on the staff section of our website. If you email them, they will try their best to fix your issue as soon as they can. And we want, my goal on the first day of school is for everyone to come in and be ready to work on that first day of school without a multitude of program changes or conflicts or concerns. So we always want to be as smooth as possible on day one because I feel if you're prepared on day one, everything else falls into place. We've gotten a lot of questions about trips for the foreseeable future. All trips have been canceled, at least put on pause. We hope that, you know, as restrictions lessen and things get better, all those events and activities will start to be put in place. As we did last year, we remain fully committed to carrying on our traditions in our events this year. Some will be virtual. All right, some we hope to do in person. It may take me three days to do some of these in-person events, but we're going to figure it out. All right, this is going to be especially true of our eighth graders. It's important that we have these eighth-grade traditions. They've been in place for 40 years. They need to stay in place during COVID, so we're going to figure out how to get these things done. Mrs. Janiky and the rest of the eighth-grade team haven't stopped thinking about this probably since May. We will still produce an eighth-grade yearbook. There will be a graduation ceremony. There will be ARISTOR, there will be Eagle Society. What that looks like, I don't know. Right, depends on the answer from the answer in late August may be very different than the answer in mid-May. Fingers crossed. So let's hope for the best and prepare for the worst. Just thinking about any other issues. It's our hope that all these things kind of start to work themselves out, but know that we will never let good enough just be enough. We will continue to hold ourselves to a high standard. We will continue to figure things out. When other schools were doing, you know, these drive-by ceremonies last year, we did ours at Mount Loretta, and it was one of the coolest things I've ever been a part of. So we try to think outside the box. We try to be creative. We try to maximize our abilities and our, you know, our plans in a way that provides our kids with the best experience possible. So we will continue to do that, and we will never let good enough just be enough. That's just not the way we do business, and I think our kids deserve our best effort every day, and that's what they will continue to get. There will be a learning curve to what September looks like. You know, I would be a fool to sit here and tell you everything will be completely smooth. There definitely will be hiccups along the way, but if you let us know what those hiccups are, we can address them, and we can figure it out. Again, if you have questions, please email our parent coordinator, Diane Consolo. I see a ton of questions here in the chat. Myself, Mr. Teames, and Mrs. Janiky are in here right now. We are going to look at all those questions and try to provide you answers in writing. Thank you so much for listening. We have almost 500 people on the call at this moment, and we have well over 100 comments inside of our chat, which tells me that you are engaged and that you are eager to return. I don't know if you could be any more eager than I am. I am going nuts thinking in this remote format. I need to start to see faces again. We are people, persons around here, and we like to have that physical and just that eye contact with kids and with parents and with students. I think that's where we thrive. That's where we do our best work, and that's where we will continue to do our best work. We look forward to seeing over 90% of our kids in the blended model in school again after a long, long hiatus, and we hope to see you all in September, folks. All right, thank you so much for listening today. We're going to jump into this chat now, and we're going to try to answer, compile a list of answers to all those questions and get this back out to you. Today's meeting will be archived so that someday when you have a question and you can go back and look at it on the website and say, "You said this." So I'm going to try to hold true to everything that I did say today based on the information that was available to me at this point. Have a great rest of the summer. Rest and relax, and take some time to enjoy yourselves and your family. If nothing else has come out of this, I think it's made our families closer because we spend so much time together. Thank you all for being the people that you are. Thank you for your wonderful children. Thank you to the staff that are on this call. I hope to see you all in September. See you soon.